That a program like Automotive might provide for a student.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else, all right? Thank you Superintendent Perry. Why don't we take a shot at item number seven, the consent calendar? And then we'll take a break to let CCTV and everyone get set up. Was there anything in the consent calendar that anyone wanted pulled? Either grant budgets or personnel actions? No, any questions about any of the grants? I'm not seeing any.
Move adoption of the consent calendar?
Second.
Second, thank you Marty. All right, any, anything, any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the consent calendar is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and we'll now take a five-minute break while we get CCTV set up. So, thank you all.
Welcome, everyone. Our first spotlight is, let's see, it's going to be presented by Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Good evening, Board Chair Kylo and the rest of the directors. I'd like to call up Rich Schwarzenhuber and Sarah Leroy to the front. Tonight, we are pleased to honor North Salem High School Boys Soccer Coach, Rich Schwarzenhuber, who was a Greater Valley Conference Boys Soccer Coach of the Year. North Salem made it to the third round of the state playoffs in soccer this year. In those three games, they never trailed an opponent until falling two to one to Grant in overtime. Winning the JVC Coach of the Year Award is special because coaches in the league decide who was selected. But Rich said the award is not really about him. When you win a coach's award, it's about your players, he said. It was really a special bunch of kids and a special year. Along with coaching, Rich taught science at North Salem for 25 years. He retired two years ago, but decided to stay on as head soccer coach because the program had a great group of talented sophomores. He wanted to coach through their senior year. He's decided if going, if he's going to retire from coaching next fall, whatever he decides, one thing is certain. Rich will continue supporting North Salem High School however he can. He is currently teaching as a substitute full-time at North Salem for the health, for a health teacher who's out on leave. He is very loyal to the Viking community. Congratulations, Rich, for being honored by your peers as the JVC Coach of the Year and for all you do for students and the community. Great job.
All right, our next spotlight is our Volunteer of the Month, and it will be presented by Lillian Gova, our Director of Communications.
We are so excited. Our Volunteer of the Month for December 2017 is reading tutor Janine Horn Ritchie, nominated by Crossler Middle School Principal Christine Walton. Janine is a retired State of Oregon employee and lives in the Crossler neighborhood. She volunteers not just on Tuesday or Wednesday, but also Thursday mornings in Ms. Auburn's sixth grade reading class and in Ms. Fiskum's eighth grade reading class. Janine said she picked Crossler to volunteer at because she wanted to work with middle school students. Everyone likes to read with little kids, but middle school kids often get forgotten, she said. I just wanted to be there for them. Janine helps out by doing tasks like reading assignments and coaching students on reading comprehension and test-taking skills. She also works with groups of four students reading books out loud together in the library. You can feel Janine's passion for teaching reading when she talks about working with students. She has a lot of experience teaching reading. For 10 years, Janine volunteered with the Salem Literacy Council and taught reading to adult non-readers in the prison system. She served as the Director of Literacy Council for five years. Janine says volunteering to work with middle schoolers is rewarding. It's interesting to learn about the technology kids have at home, she said, but they still need to learn how to use a book. It's rewarding to help them bridge that gap. So, thank you, Janine, for sharing your time, so much time, three days a week, passion and expertise by assisting Crossler middle school teachers and helping our students. Congratulations on being named our Volunteer of the Month.
Right, our next spotlight is our Business Partner of the Month. Will be presented again by Lillian Gova.
And it's our pleasure to ask our Swiegel Eagle Elementary Principal Suzanne West with Octavio Mungia and Stephanie Schmidt Webb from Costco. This is an exciting one for me because I think it was my first or second day working here when I got invited to go over to Swiegel and, and see this event. So, our Business Partner of the Month for December 2017 is Costco of Salem, nominated by Swiegel Elementary. Last, last spring, Costco reached out to Swiegel and asked if they could support the school during its back-to-school open house in the fall. Of course, Principal Suzanne West said yes. Costco gave Swiegel more than 530 backpacks full of school supplies. They were handed out during the open house, one for every student and extras for new students who enroll throughout the year. And they were some good-looking backpacks, too. I was a little jealous. But that's not all. Costco brought hot dogs, chips, drinks and granola bars to the Swiegel back-to-school night on September 1st. And, and these volunteers set up everything up, grilled the hot dogs, and made sure that all the families, the students and their brothers and sisters and moms and dads, all had a great time. And I, I will say, Octavio can really grill some hot dogs. So, but Principal West says the evening was the best-attended event by families since she's been principal at the school. After the meal, parents and students saw their kids' classrooms and met with their teachers. Seven Costco employees have continued to support Swiegel throughout the year by volunteering as buddy readers with their students. Kids need positive mentors. And Costco volunteers coming into our school and reading with kids is tremendous, said Principal West. Thank you, Costco of Salem, for your support of Swiegel Elementary. These gifts that you're sharing are meaningful to parents and students and are appreciated more than you know. And I'll tell you a secret. I think they said they just picked their school for next year and it's going to be Auburn Elementary. So, we'll look forward to having you back again next year. Thank you, Costco.
Right, and our final spotlight will be presented by Heidi Litchfield, our Director of Elementary Schools.
Board Chair Kylo and Superintendent Perry, I want to introduce you to Addison Symington. She's a fourth grader at Clear Lake Elementary School. She's the winner of the 2017 City of Kaiser Holiday Card Art Contest. And her artwork is on the cover of the card this year. Addison's artwork won the contest because it's an adorable drawing and because it shows the annual holiday tree lighting in Wallery Plaza, said Beth Melendez, chairperson of the Kaiser Public Arts Commission. Her fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Puskas, says that Addison is a good student who comes to school with a smile on her face every day. She was at Clear Lake's Elementary's Student of the Month in November for the trait of friendship. Good job. The students in Addison's class clapped and were happy when they heard the news that she had won the art contest, Mrs. Puskas said. Congratulations, Addison, on having your artwork featured on the 2017 Kaiser Holiday Card. And congratulations on being such a good student at Clear Lake. Thank you.
Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry and members of the school board, we have an opportunity tonight to hear from a group of elementary teachers. This team is from Four Corners Elementary School and they will be sharing with you their experience with the ECKRi materials, which were reported earlier in Assistant Superintendent Carlisle's Strategic Plan Report.
My name is Chelsea Zuber. I'm the LRC teacher at Four Corners and I am also an ECKRi trainer. And I was involved in the summer school program.
My name's Jennifer Lockett. I'm a first-grade teacher at Four Corners and I was a teacher in the summer school program.
And I'm Carrie Cook. I'm also a first-grade teacher at Four Corners Elementary and was also a part of summer school.
All right, so we had planned a little bit of background information on ECKRi, but what was discussed is kind of in these first couple of slides. But the things we really want to highlight is that it's really an explicit instruction routine. It's meant to help enhance Ready Gen, but also to enhance student engagement. And it gives multiple opportunities for practice. Like they said before, essential components of beginning reading, it's phonemic awareness, it's phonics, it's fluency, vocabulary and comprehension, all embedded into one.
Yeah, so our students really love sitting through an ECKRi lesson and they really love that we are on the same lesson at the same time. They can hear, we can hear each other's classes across the room and they get really excited when we're on the same lesson. But the instruction is really easy to provide because it's all very explicit instruction. The curriculum is laid out for us. There's zero prep to go into it. Some of the elements that make it really explicit and consistent between classes is that there's similar pacing. We have the same signals that we use. So, when they go from one classroom to another or from whole group to small group, the routines are the exact same. They don't get confused about, you know, that we do it differently. So, what they can really focus on is the instruction.
So, how we use ECKRi at Four Corners? We use the Tier One materials whole group. We use it in small group. That's both classroom and interventions. It's being taught currently K-1, 2 in ESOL and Lit Squared classrooms. And then currently, we are using the Tier Two materials in LRC and in the intervention programs at K-1, 2.
And just a piece on the Lit Squared. It's not, the instruction isn't provided, the curriculum's not provided in Spanish, but our Literacy Squared teachers are using it to supplement their ELD piece. Oh, well, we talked about some of the highlights. But there's a lot of built-in skill review, lots of scaffolding, lots of repetition. So, kids feel really confident when they're, you know, responding, which makes them even more engaged. They're so excited to do ECKRi every day and we never skip it. We're not allowed. The kids won't let us.
No. And so, this is some of the first-grade data from the beginning of the year to November. So, above grade level, students went from six to eight. On grade level, went from six to 14. The just below grade level went from 16 to 18. And then our far below went from 18 to eight. So, in a month and a half, we're seeing a lot of growth already. As you'll probably see in some of the summer school data, we saw similar results from two weeks of instruction. So, really, ECKRi on top of the Ready Gen is showing a lot of success for these students. Yeah, summer school is just eight days. So, we're seeing a lot of growth from this in the classrooms. So, we do have a couple of few short videos of, just so you can see, Mrs. Lockett's class, don't mind the quality, it's from my phone. I don't know if I can click it from here. Linda, can you click the video for me? Yeah. And these are just a couple of short little snippets of Mrs. Lockett's class this morning. If they're going to work.
Maybe.
But, oh. Of course, it's not going to work. But what you would see in the videos, if we can't get it up, is all the students have opportunities and multiple opportunities to respond. And it's quarterly, so you don't have one student answering and the other students are just piggybacking. They're all getting that same opportunity. There's wait time.
They're all held accountable to respond. And then there's individual practice built in to the routine as well. And we can take the same whole group routine into small group instruction, which has also been another really important piece for consistency, so.
And the good thing about the Tier Two interventions, which I don't know if they're being used across the district, is that the Tier Two materials is meant that students who are getting Tier Two ECKRi are getting the lesson before it is being taught in their classroom. So, they're being able to be more successful in the classroom setting. Even if they don't have those skills, they're able to be pre-taught and be able to be a little bit more successful with that.
Well, in the video, you'd see word, slide. The, the teacher routine's really boring, but the kids love it, so.
And some of our, the other staff members just gave us a few little comments just saying that ECKRi enhances student engagement by increasing opportunities to respond. And then the students gain confidence through each lesson due to high levels of scaffolding and repetition. So, we have, any staff member who is trained in using it is feeling that it is successful in a really important part of our reading instruction, K-2.
Five out of five stars for ECKRi.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be public comment related to agenda items. We have one person signed up, which means she still only gets three minutes, Mindy Merritt.
I'm going to try.
I'll be ready.
My theory is I just don't give you any ad content.
He'll throw things out.
I don't put it past him.
I'm ready.
All right, thanks so much. Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee and members of the board. My name is Mindy Merritt and I reside at 2381 Teal Drive, Southeast Salem. I'm here to speak to you tonight as President of the Salem Kaiser Education Association and the responsibility that we share as community leaders, as well as the bond that you'll be voting on in January. As the leader of SKEA, I want to ensure that the voices of our members is an integral part of the bond process. As you consider the bond before you, you have received input from our members who participated in one of the conceptual design meetings or chose to attend one of the community forums. I hope that the themes of these listening sessions have been shared with you along with all of the detailed information. I hope that the feedback of members who know their students and schools' needs are as big as a part of this bond as possible. In January, after we return back from break and begin to move forward with the bond, it is my hope that this board will continue to recognize the needs that are impacting our members, students and community right now. And we continue to partner with the district leaders as we work hand in hand to address the current needs to make Salem Kaiser Schools a place where staff and students can succeed for years to come. This will, of course, require additional funding to fill new classrooms being constructed or a shift in priorities for the district to put more teachers in classrooms and reduce class size. We look forward to partnering with you in the future and efforts that we can make together. Finally, I want to take this opportunity to thank you and our 2,400 SKEA members who serve the students and families within our district and our community with their professionalism, student advocacy and their commitment to ensuring that our Salem Kaiser School District and the students have a quality and equitable learning experience every day. I wish you each and every one of you a happy and wonderful holiday experience.
Thank you, Heidi, or Mindy. Okay, moving on, action items. First action item is the nomination of Jesse Lipold as our, as the Marion Region Member for the Oregon School Boards Association Legislative Policy Committee. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Jim can't, Jim won't make it, so I know he's not telling me that.
I'll move him.
Chuck moves it. Is there a second? Marty will second it. Jim is going to announce he's abstaining.
From both votes under these action items, as the Executive Director of OSBA, while Jesse won't have any control over my work or my salary, I think in honoring just clarity and ensuring that there is no favoritism here, I'm going to abstain from that vote with regard to Jesse being on the Legislative Policy Committee. And with regard to the bylaws, that does impact me directly. So, I have a direct conflict of interest and I'm not able to take part in the debate, nor the discussion, nor vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion about the motion regarding Jesse being put forward? I'm seeing it, I don't know if that head nod means yes. You want to say something or yes, you're agreeing?
I'm agreeing.
Okay.
I don't see any.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Marty was the second. Opposed? Nay, none? And abstention, we have one. So, that motion passes, so Jesse will be our nominee. Next would be the Oregon School Board's Resolution and Adoption of the Bylaws. Is there a motion to, Marty moves, that we adopt the proposed bylaws? Okay, is there a second? Sharon? Thank you. All right, discussion. Anyone wish to discuss these bylaws? The changes, the proposal? Is that a, no? Yes, no, no? The lights are on, thank you. Anyone? No, you're waiting to vote. Okay, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? One. All right, motion carries. Thank you. The consent calendar, I believe, we already did. Thank you very much. The EL report, I believe we already did. The Eather Report on ECKRi that Kelly did for us, we've already done. What am I missing on the agenda?
We're missing the first reading of the bond.
First reading. I knew there was something in there. Mike was getting a little nervous.
Small, little.
Small, little. Nothing big. Okay. Mr. Wolf, would you like to share with us about the reading for the first, or what you've got?
Yes, good evening, Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry and members of the board. Tonight, you'll have the, the first reading of the Preferred Recommendation for the Final Bond Package. And just a quick recap of where we've been over the course of the past three years with the long-range, the facility plan, the Citizens Facility Task Force, the recommendations that were presented to you at $766 million, the polling survey that was conducted and the direction to provide the board with a base bond proposal for further conversations at $619.2 million, which we did. And the board at the time made a determination for a May 2018 election ballot. And so, as we continue to refine the program as part of the overall process, conceptual design review meetings were held with staff from 28 schools. And the school board just finished a series of listening and learning sessions with the community at each of our six feeder systems throughout the district. And also, staff hosted a series of departmental meetings to provide overviews to district personnel. And then, the board held most recently a series of work sessions and reviewed the community feedback along with additional information in the following areas. Information was presented to you on the needs for additional special education classrooms at the high school levels. Seismic assessment methodology and approach was discussed. We also provided feedback from the conceptual design reviews and talked about land acquisition considerations and other programmatic concerns. After reviewing the additional information, the school board directed staff to provide a preferred recommendation using the following guidelines and priorities. You stated that the total amount of the bond was not to exceed $620 million. To focus on alleviating overcrowding, including classrooms and infrastructure, prioritize health and safety projects that will benefit the most students. Consider incorporating as much as possible from the, the content areas that were reviewed with you after the base bond proposal was developed. And use polling data and the analysis to ensure that the recommendation is in alignment with the community support and would represent a cost-effective approach. And so, if you look at Table 1, and what we have here are the, the upper part of Table 1 are the program additions. And it's a running total. So, you can see that the far-right column is the $619.2. And then you can see each of the additions. And then that will be followed by reductions and program adjustments. So, I wanted to just briefly go through that and then we'll take some questions after that, if that's okay. So, the first addition would be the Auburn addition, which is a shift from building a new elementary school to building, in addition, on the existing facility. Would also include future site work, as we had talked about, the county park as potential fields for the school in the future. So, that work is built into this $25 million. Special education classrooms at the six comprehensive high schools was $20 million. A 1% increase for cost escalation as an annual factor from 5% to 6% was approximately $18 million. The adjacencies and building flow, which keeps content areas such as science in proximity with existing classrooms and enhances the flow of students between new structures and the existing structures, was an additional $9 million. Music program concerns were a major common theme in all of the listening sessions. And so, there is a $4 million add to address various issues such as insufficient storage areas throughout the district. There's also concerns raised about, in the 2,200 model, that's 2,200 for each of the high schools except for West, based on the Portland State University's study. We have since been working with flow analytics and they've provided information to us that said 2,100 would be a better number for the future. And so, that's included here. But it also addresses parking issues and PE concerns that were raised at the public listening and learning session as well. We have newcomer centers, increasing classroom space for students at Waldo McKay and North, who are new to the district and learning English for the first time, at $2.5 million. There are some additional funds required for land acquisition in the future at $1.5 million. And then the seismic adjustment, we had estimated $56 million for the very high-risk structures at the very beginning and through a fairly extensive structural engineering analysis. The number was pretty good, but one more million is what we need to actually deliver that program. So, you see that addition there as well. So, that brings the running total up to $704 million, well, $704.2 million. Now, we move down into the program reductions. And so, the original Auburn Elementary School was programmed at $42 million. So, we'll take that out in the running total. The net programmatic adjustments, which are really the continued work of the district, sort of behind the scenes to refine scope, schedules and budgets. Some of the, the bigger reductions that are included here are basically the program year adjustments and shifting projects from later years to earlier years. And as a quick rundown, for instance, in the original base bond proposal, we had 20, in 2020, we had 13 projects originally scheduled. We moved that to 17. In 2021, we had 15 projects originally scheduled. We moved that to 18. And in 2022, we had eight originally scheduled. We dropped that to two. So, you can see that basically we're moving the projects from the out years into the earlier years in the program. That significantly reduced costs over time. And so, that total, among other things, was $18.7 million in program reductions. We also removed completely the new transportation facility that we had planned at the property we own at Gaffin Road. You can see that as a $3.3 million deduction. We also reduced the number of special ed classrooms by two at each of the, I'm sorry, by one at each of the comprehensive high schools for a savings of $2.5 million. That brings the running total to $627.7 million. We also have been awarded the Oregon School Capital Improvement Matching, awesome, program grant at $8 million. So, as we take that into account with the overall program funding and apply that to the running total, that brings us to a preferred recommendation of $619.7 million. Kind of want to pause for a second and see if there are any questions.
Marty, Lynn, Sharon?
I have two. First, on the transportation facility. I understand why we moved it out, but I also think it's very important. Can you? Can you address how we could maybe make this happen without it being part of the bond?
Yes. Thank you for the question. This is a tough one, because this is a project that is needed, particularly when we're talking about growth. And many of you know how landlocked we are with our transportation facility. We have been looking at other ways and we're pursuing some concepts using the transportation grant, which does allow for a depreciation of transportation assets over a 25-year period at about 4% a year. There's also the 70% reimbursement for interest on the loan as well each year. So we'd be happy to put together an investment strategy if the board is interested in seeing that in the future as a way to actually move forward with a transportation facility at Gaffin Road.
My second?
Yeah.
So this is, I'm gonna read you an email from a constituent that has some concerns about safety and was wondering if this is in the bond. She says, "I'm wondering if the school bond contains funding for traffic and pedestrian safety improvements around the neighborhood. Specifically, does the proposed bond include funding for 25 mile-per-hour flashing lights across the lower half of Howard Street, Rural Street, and/or Church Street? These streets, these are streets which border the school as traffic increases with the rising student population. We in the neighborhood are seeing more and more traffic and speeding. My own children have experienced near collisions with cars as they tried to cross the street while even using crosswalks. I can only imagine it will get worse after the school is remodeled and additional parking is added." So.
Yeah. That's a really good transition into how we're addressing the requirements of ORS 332.176 as well. And so basically, we wouldn't be able to spend bond funds on infrastructure improvements that we don't own unless there's a long-term lease agreement. We've talked about some of those things before. But typically, these are city assets, and we would work with the city to identify potential project funding sources, which we do. We have transportation site assessment teams, which include city and county traffic engineers, depending on where in the district we are. The principal, staff, transportation folks, we have risk management facility folks as well that are part of those teams. And typically, what will happen in a situation like this is we like to work through the school, through the principal, and then we have the site assessment, which takes a look at all of the conditions and all of the situations that you just described and puts a recommendation together. And in many ways, we can, in many times, we can address this in ways that don't require capital improvements. There's different ways to do striping, there's different ways to help students, guide students at certain points during the release times. But in those situations where it does require, let's say, a raised median or flashing signs along those lines, we work with our partners in the city and the county to identify those as projects and then work through funding options, which typically are either state through Oregon Department of Transportation, and in some cases, not many federal grants as well. So really, it's a way to identify it as a potential project and get it in the planning queue, and then it gets prioritized with all the other needs throughout the city.
Any other questions? Sharon?
So my question is with regards to Table 2, net programmatic adjustments. And this is the issue of as we move projects up into the queue, so we're adding more and more to the upcoming years. We've talked a lot about, in our work sessions, about the capacity of capital construction for projects this big across the state. And so if we move projects up and there is not the capacity, say, in the construction industry, or there is and it causes an increase in cost because of, because of the number in the queue, do we have that built into our contingency for these projects? Or how would we adjust that? So we're able to reduce these costs, but if, you know, if the market can't handle the number of projects in the queue happening in Portland and Salem all at the same time, do we have money in the contingencies?
Yeah, that's a great question. And really, what you're describing is kind of the hydraulics of the program over time. What will, the answer is yes, but to the extent of a potential issue that we may face, I don't know that it would be adequate necessarily in a worst-case scenario. We may have to come back and talk about other changes that we would need to make within the program. But right now, particularly with the cost escalation factor raising, that helps a ton. And as we discussed earlier, we do have both project-level contingencies and program-level contingencies. And so at this point, I think we need, the way that I feel about this, is we need to get the first year of construction under our belt. That locks in the costs that we know we'll be experiencing for at least the next two or three years in the program. And as we begin ramping up, some of the other programs will begin ramping down. And so it will be an interesting dynamic to watch over the next three to five years.
Great, thank you.
Kathy?
So Michael, I was concerned, when we had the earlier projections, we were talking about some improvements at Cummings and Kaiser. And they have one full line of their playground and behind the building with no sidewalk. Did we lose that?
No, actually, that's, that was one of the programmatic changes over time. We added the sidewalks at Cummings, and we were able to keep it within the overall program budget to do that. So that's what a lot of, these are net reductions you see that help pay for things, additions like, for instance, North going from just an auxiliary gym to a new main gym and auxiliary gym as well. That wasn't an add, because we were able to take care of that through the programmatic adjustments as we continue to refine the program over time. But Cummings has sidewalks.
Good.
In fact, that's listed in the other consideration section, which is really all about ORS 332.176, which is kind of what we were talking about with Director Hyman's question. But you can see down in the bulleted items, you see Cummings addition of sidewalks on the east side of the school.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mike. This is the first reading. We will take a vote on this at the January meeting.
Great, thank you.
So any questions should go to you between now and then?
Yes.
And it's on the district website if citizens have questions about it?
It will be.
I think it already is.
It is?
All right, thank you. All right. Next would be, have we already done reports? Information items, we'd be looking at the calendar. Any calendar items that are of concern to anyone or anything someone wants to share? No?
So I want to, I was waiting for somebody else.
I know. I was giving you the opportunity.
So I want to be sure that we, you get all of these on your schedule. In the next week, I'm going to come out with the budget committee schedule that isn't on this yet, so I'll send it out to you in writing, but then also, we will get it on your calendars. We are set to have a couple additional budget meetings on the front end for some more in-depth information, especially for our new board members and new budget committee members. We're gonna do a, kind of a budget workshop for our new members. So I will get those out to you within the next week, and we'll get those on the calendars of our budget committee as well. Plan that while the bond work, you've done a heavy lift, we still have quite a bit more heavy lifting, so plan that those meetings will have a lot of content and time in them. And we'll get the rest of them out to you as quick as possible to get them on calendars.
Enjoy the short night tonight. Okay, next would be public comment on non-agenda items. We have none? All right, thank you. Board activity report, anyone? Anything they'd like to report? Anyone? 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 Seeing none, we'll move on, and I believe then we are adjourned. So, but I would like to say happy holidays to those who celebrate holidays, whether it be Boxing Day, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Saturnalia. Christmas is in there, yes. New Year's. So anyway, happy holidays to all.
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl. I don't think, I think we, that doesn't come yet, and I think we have a meeting before then. Those are the only ones I could think of off the.
Alice, do you need these flyers, the folders back?
No.
Okay.